Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate. This is the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. It is 9:30 a.m. in room 229, Tuesday, Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. I'd like to let everyone know that in the unlikely event that we experience technical difficulties and need to abruptly end this hearing, we will reconvene to address any outstanding business. I'm going to change this to Friday, February 7th, at 10:01 a.m. in this room 229, and a notice will be posted on the legislature's website. We have in the CPN committee a two-minute testimony limit that we observe in the room. We do that because we have three agendas today with a significant number of measures, and we'd like to get them all passed out before our deadline next week. So if you're new to the committee, we do have a timer up here, and it's available online when you testify. We strongly encourage testifiers to not read verbatim from your testimony, your written testimony. It's been distributed to the members, and I've reviewed each piece. If you'd like to take that time to clarify your remarks or add on a personal touch, that's completely up to you. If you would like to advance, help advance the proceeding by standing on your testimony, that would also be appreciated. We'll go down a list of testifiers, and then please stay after you've testified on each measure in case there are questions from the members. And on that note, I will yield to our co-chair from the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Chair Keo Ho Kalole. First up on our agenda is SB 376 relating to tax credits. First on our list is Director Nadine Ando, DCCA.
My name is Kathleen Nakasone, I'm Representative for Department of Energy and Public Safety.
Okay, stands on your testimony with comments. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Gary Suganuma, Do Tax.
I am the Chair and Vice Chair for the United States of America for public representation and we stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Comments, thank you. And Tom Yamachika on Zoom.
Thank you, Chairs and Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We think the idea in this bill would better be served by a subsidy program. That way you can keep tabs on what you're paying for, how much you're paying. You can administer an aggregate cap more easily, and there won't be any problems with people trying to drive a truck through the door whenever you have uncertainties in the credit definitions. And we have pointed out in our testimony some inconsistencies or loose language in the bills that's now drafted. For example, the definition of qualified home fire safety improvement is an improvement to a taxpayer's residence. A taxpayer meaning any taxpayer or the one who's doing the claim. If it's the one who's doing the claim, then why are you allowing trusts, estates, partnerships, and corporations to claim the credit? Because they don't have residences. And then when you're talking about residences, does the taxpayer have to live in it for one year? Zero years? Can it be a second or third residence? You know, things like that. There are, I think, some tightening up that can be done if this is going to move forward as for credit. I'd have to answer your questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yamachika. That concludes our list of testifiers. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on SB 376? Okay, if not, I'll turn it over to the co-chair next week.
Thank you. Next measure is SB 417 relating to contractors. This measure establishes a Class B felony for the unlicensed performance of contractor work during or within five years following a national emergency, state of emergency, or disaster proclamation in an affected political subdivision. First up, we have the Contractors License Board with comments.
Good morning, Chair. I'm Lisa Mulley, a partner of the public defender and advocate for contractors and support. I would like to ask you to to the Contractors License Board.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Subcontractors Association of Hawaii. Mr. Lyons, good morning.
Good morning, Chair. I'm Tim Lyons of the Subcontractors Association, and we'll stand on our written testimony in support.
In support, thank you for standing on your testimony. That's all the registered testimony we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we will move on to the next measure. I'll yield to Senator Alafonte.
Okay, thank you, Co-Chair Keo Ho Kalole. Next item is SB 782 relating to youth and adult correctional facilities. This requires the state's youth and adult correctional facilities to provide free and accessible voice communication services for incarcerated persons. And state correctional facilities prohibits any state agency from deriving revenue or financial benefit from the provision of communication services to persons confined in state correctional facilities. Requires the Public Utilities Commission to establish service quality standards and rules for the free voice communication services. Requires a report to the legislature appropriates funds. First on our list is Leanne Gillespie, Executive Director for the Department of Human Services, Office of Youth Services, offering comments. Pamela Ferguson-Bray.
Good morning, Chair. I was Chair. Could you... My name is Pam Ferguson-Bray. I'm the Executive Director of the Department of Compensation Commission. And in that role, we have, in the majority of the tenure of the SAVAN program, the Victim Notification System, we've chaired the Governance Committee, which is a committee created by statute to ensure that this program is victim-driven. So in that context, we urge the committee to defer this measure and hold pending information about whether or not the suggestion in the preamble of Section 1, that the FCC new regulations prohibit the use of telephone revenue from being used to fund the SAVAN program. So that's not completely clear now. And as I said, we're consulting with our Deputy Attorney General. We believe that eliminating the dedicated funding for the SAVAN program is going to weaken the safety net that we have for victims in our community. In addition to that, one of the things that'll do is the telephone system as it is now. What it does is it records inmate calls. And so what it does in terms of providing safety for victims, the community, and the facilities in that regard is that it identifies when offenders are threatening against court orders, threatening victims, threatening witnesses, violating temporary restraining orders, whether or not there's a plan to bring in contraband into the facilities. So in that way also, in addition to the SAVAN system, the telephone system itself as it is protects victims, the community, and actually the facilities. The special fund was created specifically to ensure that there was a long-term, stable funding source. It was part of the Women's Caucus bills in 2012 that passed with the Justice Reinvestment Initiative in recognition that when we do justice reform work, that we consider the needs and safety of victims in the community. So as DCR, DCR has been the most incredible partner in victim services with us. But as they said in their testimony, if there's no funding, what they're going to do is eliminate the SAVAN program.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Next up on our list is Leo Sushin, Chair of the PUC.
Chair, Vice Chair. PUC will stand on written testimony, providing comments, and propose a amendment.
Okay, stand on written testimony, providing comments, and propose amendment. Thank you, Chair. Chair Mark Patterson from the Commission on Oversight. In support, Sunny Ganadan, Office of the Public Defender. In... oh, yes.
Good morning, Chair Alafonte. Good morning, Chair Keo Ho Kalole. My apologies for mispronouncing your last name. I'm standing in for Deputy Public Defender Sunny Ganadan. I'm Deputy Public Defender Edward Aquino. And at this point, the Office of the Public Defender strongly supports SB 782 and the legislature's effort to provide free and accessible communication services for incarcerated juveniles and adults and their families. In our state facilities, the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation has contracted, we globally tell, a private for-profit company to manage all communications between incarcerated individuals and their attorneys, counselors, probation officers, and their families. These communications are not only monitored and recorded, hence no privacy, and sometimes often turned over to investigative bodies like the police and prosecutor's office. But the incarcerated individuals are charged either through collect calls, prepaid debit calls, and sometimes they are charged against the small amount of money they earn while they are working in the facility. And these are pre-trial incarcerated individuals. Our crimes are indigent, and their families have very little or no financial means. A dollar to us in this room may be negligible, but to a dollar to these individuals and their families is quite significant. As correctly stated in the bill, the high cost of jail and prison communication services is a significant economic drain for incarcerated persons and their families. Where prison or jail visits by families and even for attorneys are severely limited by scheduled non-contact visits. Families have to make appointments during the weekday workday, and they're visiting them in cramped rooms over glass. In addition to that, sometimes short-staffed facilities, free and accessible communications is vital for incarcerated individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aquino. From the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Director Johnson, Deputy Director Munus.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Director Tommy Johnson is stuck at 8:30 here, so I'm here in his place. My name is Sana Munus. I'm with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, and we stand on our written testimony in opposition of Senate Bill 782. I do note that we are currently within the federal standards of providing inmate phone calls at 5.4 cents every minute. The cap is 6 cents per minute, and we also provide five minutes of free phone calls for every inmate every week. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Jean Demello Jr., interim Chair for the Hawaii Paroling Authority.
Corey Ranki, Administrator for Hawaii Paroling Authority. We stand by our written testimony to defer Senate Bill 782 where available for any questions.
Okay. Thank Administrator Ranki in opposition. Christine Denton, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, providing comments. Anna Foki-Lille Malofu Elase, Chair of the SAVAN Governance Committee. Okay, in opposition. Kat Brady in support. Carrie-Anne Chirroda, ACLU. Are in person. If you can please identify yourself, please.
Aloha, good morning. Carrie-Anne is downstairs off the 8:30 meeting as well. Director Johnson, my name is Emily Sarassa, and I'm a policy fellow with the American Civil Liberties Union of Hawaii. The ACLU of Hawaii stands in strong support of SB 782. It is critical to maintain family connections while incarcerated, especially when those connections are unable to visit in person. It may be an island away or one of the nearly 1,000 residents at Skoro Prison in Arizona. Incarcerated people who cannot afford phone calls may leave prisons and jails without the connections needed to successfully reenter their communities. Studies show that maintaining these connections increases the likelihood of reintegration success when returning home. The state recognizes this important interest already and covers the cost of calls for youth in our juvenile justice system. SB 782 will merely align the adult correction system with the youth system. Ultimately, by making these phone calls free, SB 782 will decrease recidivism rates, making it both an investment in community safety and a cost-saving measure down the line. We also support the appropriation provisions for state funds for the SAVAN program as detailed in the bill. The ACLU of Hawaii respectfully asks that you support SB 782. Mahalo for scheduling this bill. I'm your Mr. George.
Thank you so much. Ronald Fujiyoshi in support. Selena Chaplin in support on Zoom. IT?
Hi.
Hi, good morning, Selena.
Good morning. My name is Selena Chapin. I'm the Chief Advocacy Officer at Worth Rises. We're a nonprofit working to end the exploitation of incarcerated people and their families. We're a part of a coalition of organizations and individuals who've experienced incarceration in Hawaii. One of the women in our coalition wanted to share the testimonies. She didn't sign up in time, so I'm going to read hers before getting to mine. Here's hers. My name is Sofen Kaya. I was incarcerated in Hawaii for over three years. Throughout that time, I was very lucky to have the support of my family and money on the phone so I could speak with them daily. While I was there, I witnessed many people who were not able to use the phone because their families, their children, didn't have the means to say stay connected. It led to so much pain. Access to the outside world is vital for a person's well-being and ability to gain support, or the very least, be able to line up whatever they need when released. Due to my ability to use the phone daily, I was at peace internally and able to focus on my studies and rehabilitation, and I'm now pursuing an engineering degree and hold a 4.0 GPA. All people should have the ability to do the same. Maybe then they can find a way to break the cycle of recidivism. I'm going to do mine now. Worth Rises strongly supports SB 781. We understand the implementation process. We have helped make communication free in many states across the country, and we're dedicated to supporting Hawaii in this as well. Importantly, just because I've heard it talked about already, this bill ensures funding for the SAVAN program, which currently relies on phone call commissions. Due to the new FCC regulations banning such commissions, Hawaii must secure alternative funding by January 1st, and this bill does secure that funding. The cost of communications forces many, especially women and children, into financial hardship. Studies have consistently shown that this communication is so important for hope, mitigating trauma for children forced facing parental incarceration, improving reentry success, and increasing public safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Chapin. Next up is Lauren Walker on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you, IT. Lynn Costales-Matsuoka.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, Lynn Costales-Matsuoka, Executive Director from the Sex Abuse Treatment Center. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I am resting on our written testimony. We are concerned about the impact that this bill would have on SAVAN and how important that is for sex assault survivors, sex trafficking survivors, actually victims of all crimes. The SAVAN program is very, very important insofar as that it allows them to receive adequate notification before their offender is released so that they can implement and develop safety plans. I have nothing further to add, but I am here if anyone has any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Georgette Yando in support. Corey Aimé in support. Tony Florkey in support. Jordan Smith in support. In opposition, Toby Wilson. And finally, Dennis Dunn in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha, good morning, Chairs and Vice Chairs and Members of the Committees. My name is Dennis Dunn. I am the retired Director for the Victim Witness Cocoe Services in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I am testifying in strong opposition to this measure. I was there when we helped to put together SAVAN. It's a critical lifeline of information for crime victims and helps to contribute to their safety and well-being. This proposal here, while it does provide for an alternative appropriation in place of the use of the telephone fees, this would mean that there'd be uncertainty. And although money is appropriated, there's no guarantee as to what the amount is, whether the legislature would approve, whether the governor would approve, and each year whether the department would let out the funds to keep the program going. We believe that there is an alternative. You could increase the fees for the commissary fees, but I'm not sure that the proponents of this bill would like that either. Thank you very much for this time, and I appreciate your opportunity to be heard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. That completes our list of registered testifiers. Anyone else wishes to testify on SB 782? If not, members, questions? Move on to our next item, which is SB 999 relating to fireworks. This repeals all permissible uses of consumer fireworks and makes conforming amendments to the fireworks control law establishes civil penalties for the use and sale of consumer fireworks, including nuisance abatement proceedings and forfeiture of assets used in the commission of the illegal use or sale of consumer fireworks. Establishes the Fireworks Forfeiture Special Fund to deposit asset forfeiture proceeds to provide for community safety education programs. First on our list is Deputy Attorney General Brenton A. Inoye.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Deputy Attorney General Brenton A. Inoye. I'm providing comments to this bill. We suggest amending Section 1 of the bill to add a required explanation regarding why the program cannot be implemented through the general fine appropriation process. Second, we suggest in Section 7 of the bill, replacing the reference to Section 132D-5 with Section 132D-6, which lists the permissible uses of consumer fireworks. And last, we suggest removing the automatic doubling of the fine and community service amounts. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Inoye. Kathy Seau, Department of Law Enforcement, in support. Anyone from DLE? Jerome Pocaro, Captain of the Police Department. Captain Pocaro?
I'm actually... My name is Sergeant Fugano. I'm a Lieutenant.
Oh, Lieutenant.
I'm acting as the acting captain in the absence of Jerome Pocaro.
Oh, you can sit down so that we can hear you on the mic.
Who is out absent today due to illness. The Hawaii Police Department supports this bill.
Okay, thank you so much. Tad Trout, TNT, in opposition on Zoom.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. My name is Tad Trout. I'm a partner at TNT Fireworks, and we oppose SB 999. I've submitted written detailed testimony as to why we are opposed, but I would like to add the following comments. SB 999 is attempting to address the tragic accident that happened on Oahu this past New Year season. While noble, the reality of the results will have unintended consequences. As I've testified several times before the Honolulu City County Council, prohibition does not work. SB 999 will prohibit the sale and use of state-approved consumer fireworks as it is today. State-approved consumer fireworks are being sold on the other islands through major retailers such as Walmart, Long Strogg, Don Quixote, and Costco, to name a few. The other islands are not experiencing these tragic events that occurred on Oahu because the residents have safer products readily available to them. So what's the answer? One, stringent enforcement with strong prosecution. The prosecutors must prosecute in order to be effective on the enforcement side. Number two, offer safer state-approved consumer fireworks on Oahu through major retailers without permit requirements like what is being done on the other islands. It is and has been successful. Three, require safety and education program to teach consumers the difference between illegal explosives and legal fireworks. SB 999 has a provision for that, and TNT already has many successful programs ready, available at no charge. We support that. In closing, I ask you that you hold the measure, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Tina Yamaki, Retail Merchants of Hawaii on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Danielle Hurt, Phantom Fireworks, in opposition. Abra Green for the Libertarian Party of Hawaii in opposition. Following people are in support. Stephanie Kendrick from the Humane Society, Mary Kawasaki, Lynn Marisol, Gordon Lindsay, Beverly Heiser, all in support. And the following people in opposition, Michael Acob Jr. and Nicholas Zer. Is there anyone that wishes to testify on SB 999? Members, questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Co-Chair Keo Ho Kalole.
Thank you. The last measure on this 9:30 a.m. agenda is SB 1136 relating to insurance. This measure establishes rate-making regulations for insurers who base their rates on a policyholder or applicant's wildfire risk. DCCA in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm here, Kathleen Nakasone, representing the Department for Acting Insurance Commissioner Jerry Bump. And the Department respectfully opposes the bill, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Insurers Council in opposition.
We stand on our testimony in opposition.
Thank you very much. State Farm in opposition.
We, as the State Department of Defense, stand on our written testimony in opposition.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. National Association of Mutual Insurance Companies in opposition. And we have late testimony from Lahaina Strong in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we will recess.
Thank you. We're reconvening the 9:30 a.m. joint agenda with PSN and CPN. First on our list, this is for decision-making, SB 376 relating to tax credits. The co-chairs have conferred and what we'd like to do with this measure is pass with amendments. We'll be amending the bill to incorporate some of the State of Hawaii Department of Taxation. We're gonna make the tax credit non-refundable. We're gonna also make the third-party certification means the third-party certification of the credit. On page five, delete lines eight to seventeen as it relates to recapture. On page five, delete subsection I, lines eighteen to twenty-one, and page six, lines one to two. Then on page seven, line five, change the effective date to July 1st, 2077, and make any other technical amendments. Any further discussion on the recommendation? Okay, if not, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Aye vote, yes, Senator Fuganaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes, excuse Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much.
For CPN Committee, same recommendation, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards. And Senator Awah. Your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure on this agenda is SB 417 relating to contractors. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. There are some technical non-substantive amendments and we'll also defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members that are present, are there any voting with reservations or in opposition? Hearing none, your measure is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, for PSM, same recommendation. Chair votes aye.
Aye vote, yes, Senator Fuganaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes, excuse Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Our next item is SB 72 relating to youth and adult correctional facilities. Recommendation is to defer.
Same recommendation for CPN.
On SB 999 relating to fireworks, we're gonna need a little more time on this, so I'd like to defer for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs till Monday, February 10th, 2025 at 3:15 p.m. in Conference Room 225.
And for CPN Committee, we will defer decision-making on this measure to Tuesday, February 11th at 10:01 a.m. in Conference Room 229. The last measure on this agenda, sorry, is SB 1136 relating to insurance. Nodding testimony, the recommendation on this measure is to defer.
And same recommendation for PSM to defer.
We are adjourned. Hey, good morning and welcome. This is our Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, 9:45 a.m. agenda in Room 229. This is a joint committee hearing with our friends from the Senate Committee on Economic Development and Tourism to hear two measures. The first is SB 744 relating to condominiums. This measure establishes the condominium loan program and the condominium loan program special fund to be administered by the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority on behalf of the Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism for the purpose of providing funding for essential repairs and deferred maintenance to condominium associations organized under 514 BHRS and also appropriates monies and sunsets in 2045. First up, we have the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. This is Gwen Yamamorala from the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. I am sorry I'm on Zoom and not able to testify in person, but I stand on my written testimony in support and I'm available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Hawaii Bankers Association with late testimony in support.
Morning, Chair, Chairs. Hawaii Bankers Association stands on its testimony.
Thank you very much. We also have Greg Masakian offering comments. Okay, we also have Jacob Winchek in support. Lynn Marisol in support. Late testimony from the Department of Budget and Finance offering comments.
Hello, Chair, this is Greg Masakian. I apologize, I was trying to start my video and I couldn't and I didn't think you could hear me.
You're fine, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. For those of you who know me there, I currently serve as the First Vice President of the Kukua Council. I was president last year and I also serve on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I'm here speaking today as an individual and I will be speaking on further testimony going forward the rest of this afternoon or this morning. But on this one, I provided comments because the bill was unclear as to what these loans are, but I have a feeling I know and I believe it's CPACER loans. And if it's CPACER loans, I have very serious concerns with those loans. And in addition, I have concerns with adding additional debt to condominium associations in a way that is not conducive to traditional banking when the market isn't regulated the same way. So in the case of these CPACER loans, let me just pull up something very quickly. If they are CPACER loans, and I would ask you to clarify that, these loans can have an actual higher interest rate than is typical for traditional commercial loans. The loan is also tied, my understanding, to the property tax assessments. And so when homeowners get their property tax bill, there's gonna be a little bit of a shock. I'm not even sure how this works, but I know it's something that needs to be addressed. And because of limitations of my time, I'm gonna pause in a moment here and just hopefully continue on the next bill. But what I would ask you to do, if you could, is ask the question, is this CPACER? Because I have additional concerns I'll share with you in a moment on the next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments from BNF? And late testimony from the Hawaii Credit Union League. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Co-Chair Decoy.
Greg, what is a CPACER?
So CPACER, it's a commercial loan program that it's administered by third parties. There's a lot of these popping up. Unfortunately, it started as a PACE loan. It was a loan that was intended to be for single-family residences for solar panels, things like that. It's now expanded into what HGIA is trying to do to bring it over to condominiums. And while I support, you know, the intent and the desire to do something like that, this intent is actually gonna be detrimental. There's been numerous lawsuits regarding PACE loans and I believe CPACE loans also. C is for commercial. And there's been some in LA County and other places, but the loans themselves are potentially very problematic. They can be predatory. And again, the questions you have to ask, that in a moment on my next opportunity, the questions you have to ask are, how is the loan repaid? If it's through property tax assessment, my understanding, people are gonna be foreclosed on. That's what's happening with these lawsuits. And so it's seen as a predatory issue. And the federal government sees this also, so there's been some supportive regulators in the industry.
Thank you. Chair, is HGIA here?
Gwen?
Yes, I'm here.
So Gwen, what do you have to say to that?
So Greg is actually confusing the residential PACE program with the commercial PACE program. So these are not real property tax assessments. It will be, it's a governmental lien. However, it will be part of the common area maintenance for the condominium and it will not be a lien over residential units.
Okay.
If I could, that's not my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Masakian. Are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions by members, then we'll move on to the next measure, which is similar. SB 1601 relating to condominiums. This measure also proposes to establish within the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority a condominium loan program to provide qualified condominium associations with low-cost financing or refinancing on previously obtained loans for maintenance or repair projects. And also establishes the condominium loan loss reserves program to incentivize lenders into providing loans at competitive rates and terms to condominium associations for the purpose of allowing condominium associations to make necessary maintenance or repairs. Measure requires reports to the legislature and appropriates funds into and out of the condominium loan revolving fund. First up, we have the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority online in support.
I stand on my written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. DCCA in support.
Yes. So Kathleen Nakasone, Acting Insurance Commissioner Jerry Bump and the Division stands on its comments.
Thank you for standing on your comments in support of the bill. Hawaii Bankers Association in support.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Joint Committees. Ihoko Ita on behalf of the Hawaii Bankers Association. We just wanted to briefly comment on this bill. We support the intent of the bill. It's a two-part bill that has a loan program and then also a public-private credit enhancement program. We think that there's some details that need to be worked out with respect to some of the terms in the bill right now. So we have reached out to the Green Infrastructure Authority and I believe are meeting with them today to try to work out some of these details. But we do support the intent of the bill and appreciate your hearing the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony in support from Lynn Marisol. Late testimony offering comments from the Department of Budget and Finance and also the Hawaii Credit Union League offering comments. Is there anyone else who would like to testify?
Hello, Chair, this is Greg Masakian.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we do not have you, but please go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Because I wasn't clear on what this bill was as it didn't mention CPACE or CPACER. Both terms are used. I now know that it is, my understanding, CPACE or CPACER. I wish that was clarified in the bill and mentioned, at least a type of loan, because maybe there'll be other loans that are named something different in the future. Again, my understanding, and this is coming firsthand from one of the lenders that I reached out to last year regarding these types of loans, one of the lenders that was listed at the HGIA website. So I got it directly from HGIA. That lender informed me that the fees would actually be, or the assessment for the loan would actually be on the property taxes. I asked if it would be separate for each individual condominium owner and he indicated yes. I don't know if there's been a change in that since then, but that was a deep discussion. I have notes on that and I can circle point future testimony as this progresses. I do share concerns that I don't feel you're getting a correct and upfront response on that. And ultimately, my understanding is there's a first priority lien that would be placed at least on the building and potentially on the individual units. And that's a strong concern. So I would ask that you please clarify that and I'd like to see it in writing so that we can move on with this and get a formal answer. I've never gotten one so far. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Members, questions?
Question.
I believe my question would be directed to Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. Mr. Yamamoru?
Yes.
Okay. You know, with respect to some of the CPACER loan applications that you had brought up in a prior hearing, I believe you stated that of the applications that HGIA is currently reviewing, there are 12 applications from condo associations in your pipeline. Is that kind of a fair estimate as to how many requests you have received and how many you are processing at present?
Yes, Senator, so we have received about 12 requests for proposals, which I have passed on to our CPACE lenders. You know, I am not doing financing right now, so I pass it on to them. And then, just like if they were negotiating with Bank Hawaii, First Oahu, Central Pacific Bank, they would do the negotiations amongst each other. If it becomes a loan, then it would come back to me once it's almost ready to be approved for enrolling into the program.
Okay, do you have a rough estimate of the total volume, you know, dollar-wise?
Yeah.
Loan processes, loans that are in process?
Yeah, so it ranges. So it ranges from like 14 million to 2 million. On average, it's about 5.5 million.
Okay, so roughly, total would be somewhere in the range of, say, a little over 50 million if you took the 12 and you estimated what their level of need was?
Right.
Okay. Second question is with respect to the Senate Bill 1601 framework, how long does HGIA think it will take to actually get your program up and running and to actually be in a position to service applications for loans as well as financial assistance?
Yeah, so it shouldn't take us very long. We would be doing our underwriting in-house and documentation in-house. So I would say depending on the complexity and completeness of the application, normal underwriting could take between two weeks to a month, to two months if it's very complex.
Okay, so I guess as a follow-up, would this be sort of similar to last year's legislation on CPACER financing? You estimate that from the time of startup, say, July, to the end of the year, December, you would have your program up and running?
Yeah, so actually, Governor signed that bill into law on May 20th, I'm sorry, May 30th, 2024. We launched the program on July 1st, 2024. What has taken a bit of time was the CPACE lenders needed an opinion letter from a local attorney that applying that they could rely on the governmental assessment. I believe they received that letter December, late December or early January, 2025. In our case, we won't need an opinion letter because it is our assessment. And the other difference is, you know, in the bill that was passed last year, we are relying on private lenders, just like banks and credit unions and other private capital to lend. So it is their underwriting criteria that needs to be met in order for a loan to be approved. Ours, because we're a state agency, as you know, with our clean energy, we're a little bit more flexible in our terms and our rates and our underwriting.
Okay, so kind of roughly same timeframe, hopefully a little shorter.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as we, if, you know, if this bill passes, we will definitely start on our documentation to have that ready for when the bill gets signed into law and the money becomes available for financing. We can start taking in applications, so we can already start the underwriting so that as soon as the money becomes available, we can start loaning.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions?
Other question. So for Gwen, so the bill provides you guys with the ability to contract out the condominium loan program to financial institutions. How you guys select those financial institutions?
Yeah, so you know, this bill does a couple of things. It lets us lend directly or it lets us provide credit enhancement. It's not an or, it's an and, provide credit enhancements to local financial, it doesn't even have to be local, but local lenders. It would be based on the lender's interest and appetite to participate in the credit enhancement program, similar to our other programs that we run with the federal SSBCI funds. We invite everybody in, but it's really up to the lenders on whether or not they would like to participate in the program.
So you do not pick that lender yourself?
They pick us, yeah, they pick us.
And then how much you guys expect the state to pay to support this loan program?
You know, that's the million-dollar question because it just depends on the need. I was looking at a Fannie list that I think has about 120 condominium projects that are not Fannie-eligible, mostly because they are underinsured. And so, you know, if the average loan amount or the average need is about 5.5 million dollars, times 100 projects, that's a lot of money. So I would say it just kind of depends on what money is available as well as if we can leverage some state funds with private capital of the banks and credit unions so that we can make the money stretch farther so that they can do the lending and we can provide them some credit enhancement.
So I guess, you know, that's the issue, yeah? You know, how you guys expect the state to pay to support this program and how much? So I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Okay, Gwen, just to clear up, can you just clarify for the members the major differences between the two measures?
Sure, yeah, so the first, you mean SB 744 and SB 1601 or the two? Okay, SB 744 is, provides us the ability to do financing. SB 1601 provides two options. Provide for HGIA to do direct financing and work with the banks and credit unions to provide credit enhancements, which basically, it's not a guarantee, but it is, it takes first losses, so it hopefully helps the banks and credit unions make these loans to condominium associations that they might not feel comfortable making without it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair.
You know, in terms of this approach in Senate Bill 1601, what is the benefit or the advantage of having HGIA undertake this program as opposed to what was previously contemplated in the insurance stabilization bills? 1044 Senate Bill that we heard last week? Because in either case, the government would have to provide that intermediary step, right?
I think the 1044, I'm going off of memory, that wasn't a loan to the condominiums for repairs. I think it was for insurance premiums?
Okay, it's only for the insurance side, okay. All right, thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, recess. Okay, we're back for decision-making on this Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, 9:45 a.m. agenda in Room 229. While we wait for vote sheets, we'll move to the first measure, which is SB 744 relating to condominiums. So I'll just note for members, both measures are fairly similar. The second measure on the agenda is a little bit longer and has a little bit more comprehensive framework. So what I'm going to propose is that we pass SB 744 with amendments. We will delete the contents of the bill and we will insert the contents of SB 1601, which again is substantially similar, but just a little more comprehensive in nature. And defect the effective date of the measure to July 1, 2050. And I will also note that the measure contains blank appropriations, but we'll have the committee report note that the initial appropriation that was proposed in the original draft of the measure is $30 million. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, passing with amendments, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah is excused, your measure is adopted.
Thank you.
Committee on Economic Development and Tourism, same request, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Aye vote, yes, Senator Fuganaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Awah is excused, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last measure on the agenda, SB 1601, we're going to defer decision-making on this measure to Friday, February 7th at 10:01 a.m. in Conference Room 229. to Friday, February 7th at 10:01 a.m. in conference room 229, to try and see if there is more that can be done on this issue.
Oh.
You can do it here with us.
Yeah. So, okay, so Committee on Economic Development and Tourism, SB 1601, Friday, 10:01 a.m., room 229.
All right, thank you very much, where adjourned? Okay, good morning and welcome to this Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, 10 a.m. Hearing in Conference Room 229. First measure is SB 146 relating to condominiums. This measure amends the conditions and procedures of alternative dispute resolution methods for condominium-related disputes. First up, we have CAI in support. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Philip Nerny, I chair the Legislative Action Committee for the Community Associations Institute, and I'm testifying on their behalf. Just for reference, though, I also chair the Condominium Property Regime Task Force that the Legislature created in 2023. The support for this bill comes from listening to a lot of concerns about condominium-related disputes. The novel features of it are to not allow the accrual of attorney's fees on top of fines and to provide a mechanism for resolution of fines that are disputed. The other thing that's novel is that it replaces non-binding arbitration, which can be a very elaborate, expensive process, which ultimately can be rejected. And instead, it puts in place early neutral evaluation, which is a well-established and informal approach to finding out what the relative probabilities of success on the merits are. We think that if people go through mediation first and then get a formal evaluation of their position, that will have utility. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii First Realty in support.
I stand on my testimony in support of the motion.
Thank you very much. We have Greg Mosakian online in opposition. Good morning.
Good morning, again, I'm Greg Mosakian, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this measure. While I support the intentions of trying to reduce attorney's fees, that's one of the most major concerns that condominium association owners have throughout Hawaii. What I'm concerned about is just throwing another mediation after the fact, after maybe an initial mediation was done. I do, I do agree that the arbitration is costly, and that's just another form, in my opinion, of litigation. But calling something a neutral evaluation, when we already have an evaluative mediation, which I think is almost the same thing, it's a very creative way to do that. And, and my understanding is, you know, if you go to the mediation upfront, which I believe you would still have to do per the statute, and then you don't get anywhere, then what do you do? You go to this mediation, but it's just another name. So evaluative and neutral, to me, are one in the same or similar. The problem is then you've got additional attorney's fees, because condominium owners are going to, most likely, when they see the other side lawyer up, they're gonna have to go get a lawyer, and I know this from my personal experience. So when you do that, and then you have an additional step that's going to be mandated by the state government, and we know that people say self-governance all the time. We know condo associations aren't self-governed, because we're here today at this, at this hearing. So you're, you're establishing some governance over condo associations. So I'd ask that you really look carefully at this measure, and I do not support it as written. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have offering late testimony with comments online, the Real Estate Commission. Good morning.
Morning, Chair Kilkulali, Vice Chair Fukunaga, members of the committee. My name is Keenan Klein, and I'm testifying on behalf of Derek Emmon in the Hawaii Real Estate Commission. We'll stand on our written comments, apologize that the committee received our testimony late. Available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony from Dallas Walker in support, Aaron Kabagnolo in support, Jeff Sedino in support, Lila Moore with comments, Jonathan Billings in support, Law Offices of Mark McKeller in opposition, and the following individuals all in opposition, Ann Anderson, Mary Freeman, with late testimony, all in opposition, Carol Walker, Primrose Leong Nakamoto, Julie Wassel, Lance Fujisaki, and Pamela Shell. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Vice Chair.
I guess for Mr. Nerny and Mr. Emery, in some of the testimony that Lila Moore had submitted as a written comment, she referenced the addition of some sort of written notification. Would that be something that, you know, the current draft could incorporate if it specified that this would be both by first-class and certified mail, return request requested, and adequate postage?
I apologize for not knowing the context, Senator.
Okay.
I'm certainly happy to review and not oppose to amendments that make sense. I would say that I do think a fair amount of thought has been applied to the development of Senate Bill 146 as it is.
Well, looking for ways to come out with a bringing together of all competing differences.
Happy to work with the committee.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up, Mr. Nerny. Can you just describe for the committee, the, from, from how you see it, the substantive differences between evaluative versus neutral mediation?
Well, mediation is mediation, early neutral evaluation is an entirely distinct thing. So mediation is a self-guided process of essentially facilitated negotiation. And I am a mediator, by the way. So there's entirely an autonomy aspect to mediation that is an attempt by people to see if they can work their own thing out. It is true that under current statute, there isn't a evaluative component, meaning the mediator can be free to say, I think you're gonna lose, or I think you're gonna win, or your strong points are, or how do you answer this? But it's still mediation. So if you look, if you take 100% of condominium-related disputes and you put them in a sieve, mediation's gonna take out some of those, but not all. So, okay, you've been through mediation, you're still upset or you're unsatisfied, and you want to go further. Early neutral evaluation is an informal process, but it is one that involves putting forward your legal arguments, putting forward your documentary support, and getting a reasoned decision by a qualified person that will have two effects. One, it will bind you at that level to any attorney's fees that you'd incurred for that process only, but it is an informal or it's an expedited truncated process. It is not like non-binding arbitration, which can mean a lot. So at that juncture, you have both gone through a mediation where you've tried to do it on your own.
So, so no binding decision at any point of any of these processes?
Correct.
What, what about, what if we were to just propose binding arbitration for all disputes?
Well, with all due respect, there's a constitutional right to trial by jury.
Also, I mean, there's always enough, there would, wouldn't there likely be an appeals process for the decision rendered by a binding arbitration?
So under current statute, non-binding arbitration is the analog that I think the Chair is thinking about. And the problem with it is you can spend 100 grand doing a non-binding arbitration, and then whoever doesn't like the outcome just says, yeah, I don't like it, now let's go to court and do it all over again. So the reason to consider at least a different process short of the actual big-time fight, whether in arbitration or in litigation, is you want to give people chances to think about it real carefully.
I understand that, I understand it's being proposed in the bill, but, you know, if we were to just say, binding arbitration, what's the problem?
There's a constitutional right to jury trial.
And you have to waive it to participate in binding arbitration?
That's, that's why the support, in previous sessions, the support through the Condominium Education Trust Fund for binding arbitration was voluntary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Okay, we'll move on to the next measure, SB 147 relating to condominiums. This measure establishes processes and requirements for associations to impose fines against unit owners, tenants, and guests for violations of the declaration, bylaws, or house rules, and prohibits associations from charging attorney's fees with respect to any fines that are not deemed collectible. CAI in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, Phil Nerny for CAI. We prefer 146 because it's more comprehensive, but 147 really responds to concerns that I heard as Chair of the Condominium Property Regime Task Force, which I'm not testifying on behalf of, I'm just saying I personally was informed by that experience. And while I don't think the problem is widespread, it is certainly true that if somebody gets a fine and then decides not to pay it, they can get referred to counsel, and then counsel is going to build, there was going to be fees on top of the fine. 147 provides a mechanism that eliminates that problem. It enhances the due process requirements for the assessment of a fine, and it provides a linear path to achieve resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii First Realty in support.
Good morning, Chair and Committee. I think when you start looking at condominium disputes, we have an issue with regard to-
Can you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Richard Emory, Principal Broker for Hawaii First Realty. I have been engaged in condominium disputes, mediations, litigation for 30 years. When we look at disputes between owners, we sometimes get confused that all disputes are the same. I see all the time where owners will tear out a load-bearing wall, will put a second kitchen in their single-family CPR condominium, things that are violations of the declarations, the building code, the state law, and condominium boards hire attorneys to protect their interests of all the owners to pursue that. The problem stems from the call of the minimus lower-level disputes, where there's fines that exist that can be abused by the association turning it over to lawyers and creating unnecessary costs to resolve it. I think SB 147 and 146 are both strong bills to help mitigate the problems with dispute resolution for condos. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Sedino in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Jeff Sedino, and I support this bill. First off, thank you for holding this hearing for these condo measures. I look forward to participating in local government again for another session and making improvements, even if they don't happen as quickly as they would in a perfect world. But sticking at it, I support this bill, but wanted to make comments that are more philosophical. So no matter what your political affiliation is, nobody would want Donald Trump or any president to also be the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court or the Majority Leader of both chambers of Congress. That would, of course, resemble a dictatorship. But the lack of separation of powers is exactly what we have in condo governance. The board is the legislative branch, the executive branch, and the judicial branch. Only safeguard against them being a dictatorship is that the board governs by majority. But as taught in school, that the entire reason why we have a senate in the first place is because our founding fathers did not believe in government by the majority. Separately, we also have a constitutional right that we are innocent until proven guilty. However, in condo governance, we are guilty until we are proven innocent. When the board is acting as both the plaintiff and the judge, it's absurd to think that they're going to roll in favor of the owner and against themselves. So these are things that are obviously a recipe for bad governance, but we accept them as normal in condominiums, just because that's the way that it has always been. So I support this bill, but until we can reform these more fundamental issues, we're only putting a Band-Aid over the real problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Mosakian online.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. Just excuse me for one moment while I just pull up.
And I believe we have you in support.
I am in support, but I have concerns with bill, and it requires amendments to be effective. So again, my name is Greg Mosakian. I'm currently First Vice President of Kukua Council, which the Legislature knows very well. Since 1972, we've advocated for condominium owners in some regards at some level. But I'm here speaking as an individual, and we advocate on behalf of our kapuna unless advantaged. And I say that because in the case of what I'm about to tell you very quickly here, at my condo association, there's a kapuna that had a dispute for less than $5,000 for a water leak where his ceiling was damaged in his cabinets. And it ended up going to court instead of being amicably addressed. And he's now got attorney assessments of, I think, around $40,000, possibly more, which can be seen at E. Kukua. While I support the intent of this bill, small claims court is very limited. There's a 5K limitation and specific requirements for what you can bring. Obviously, this bill would have to amend something. In addition, there can be a counterclaim of up to $40,000. So if an owner wanted to bring a claim, the association could be per up to 5,000. The association could bring a counterclaim of up to 40,000. That's a strong concern. Ultimately, the embudsman measures, there's a measure that hopefully gets scheduled, SB 1265. That's the solution for Hawaii for all residents. And I, I hope, and I pray, that that measure gets a chance to be heard. It's a revised version of last year's measure. It puts it under the DCCA, and there's no state funding required. And that's where I think everything will be. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony from Lynn Matusal offering comments. The following individuals, as well, all in support. Mary Yi, Dallas Walker, Aaron Kabagnolo, Michael Asen, Lila Moore with comments, Jonathan Billings in support. The following individuals have submitted late testimony in writing, and all of these individuals oppose the measure. Mark McKeller, Idor Harris, Ann Anderson, Mary Freeman, Julie Wassel, Carol Walker, Lance Fujisaki, and Pamela Shell. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll move to the next measure, SB 253 relating to condominium reserves. This measure excludes the good-faith defense for associations whose boards adopt a budget that omits a detailed budget summary as required by Section 514B-148 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes. Also clarifies a unit owner's standing and association's burden of proving compliance. CAI in support.
Again, Chair and Committee Members, my name is Richard Emery. I'm testifying on behalf of CAI with regard to this measure. If you go back in history to 2023, the governor enacted Act 199 that was introduced by Senator Fukunaga with regard to the common complaint that people, meaning owners and potential buyers, don't understand the reserve study or the documents or the data because they're buried in hundreds of pages. A reserve study alone can be 100 pages long, and for the layperson, it's very difficult to understand the true status. So, Act 199 was adopted, requiring a mandatory disclosure of what is considered as seven critical items on the status of a budget and reserve study. It was adopted, signed into law, effective July 1, 2023, by my recollection. Being an industry practitioner, I can tell you that some people look at that very loosely, and they'll take that document and say, refer to the reserve study to find the answer, instead of giving a clear summary that everybody can read and understand the situation. The purpose of the summary was enacted because we wanted to clearly present to owners and buyers the exact situation of their association so they knew what they're getting into. It's a simple disclosure item. So, on that basis, I support these amendments or these changes to the 253 to make it clear the boards have to take this seriously, managing agents have to take this seriously. If they don't put out documents that are clear and accurate, then they lose their good-faith protection under the law. So, that's my testimony, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, well, before we move on, I'd just like to note, it's 10:50. We are running short on time. We have, again, received the written testimony on these measures. I would like to take testimony on all these measures, so at a minimum, if we need to defer decision-making to get to our floor session, we don't have to ask everyone to come back on Friday. So, again, within your discretion, I would just ask that you summarize your comments the best you can. Next up, Mr. Nerny in support.
I would like to say, my name is Phil Nerny, and I support the measure, and there is a proposed amendment that I think the committee would be worthwhile to consider.
Thank you. Next, Greg Masakian online in support.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. So, again, I'm Greg Masakian. I do support this measure. I would ask if it's possible to look at a potential amendment. I think it could fit into this bill. At my condo association where I live, I still don't have our annual financial audit report from 2023, and as of September 22, 2024, that was in violation of HRS 514B-150. So, it's in violation of state law to not provide it to the owners. It's very concerning to me, and I don't know if there's a way to blend that in and add that section, but it's a major concern. We're already into 2025, and we don't have a copy of the final financial, or a draft of the financial audit from our auditor. So, I'll stop there. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Okay, I'd like to note, Dallas Walker, Michael Asen, Lila Moore, Jonathan Billings, and Mary Yi, all in support. Lourdes Schibert, Mark McKeller, Carol Walker, Ann Anderson, Pamela Shell, and Lance Fujisaki, all offering comments on the measure, and Idor Harris, or Idor Harris in opposition. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll move on. SB 385 is next. This measure relating to condominiums requires that condominium associations make the governing documents available on the association's website and make them accessible to all owners, occupants, and tenants free of charge. First up, we have the Realtors in support. Thank you very much. Greg Masakian in support.
Thank you. I stand on my testimony, but just to briefly state one sentence, whatever should be publicly available to do an owner, or I should say, available, I said that the wrong way, whatever should be available to an owner when they go to purchase their condominium. So, the docs, the docs that are provided, in my opinion, should be publicly available on website that everyone has access to for any condominium that's registered with the state annual registration. And one thing that I've heard said previously, well, those documents are all given to you when you purchase, so if you're an owner, that's not true. Those documents are amended frequently. And so, when people are asking for the amended documents or revisions, or maybe they didn't get the proper copy, or they lost a copy, and they have to maybe pay, that's a concern. There's requests for payment before you can get certain documents. So, it's important that they be, in my opinion, publicly available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy Wong in opposition?
Yes, I'm here, Chair.
Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. I'll be, I'll be brief. So, good morning, my name is Sandy Wong. I am a condo owner. I'm also on my condo board, and I'm also on the HCCA board. I am testifying in my personal capacity. Although I think the intent by the introducer was sincere, I am opposed to this bill because it's inconsistent with HRS 514B-191C. These documents should only be available inconsistently with 191C, should only be available to owners. It should not be available to renters or just occupants who do not, who are not members of the association, simply because they are not members of the association. And so, the association has no legal obligation or any legal relationship with the tenant or an occupant who's not an owner. If a tenant or an occupant would like to see the documents, the appropriate thing to do would be to ask their owner to see if they could have the documents, and if the owner feels that they should, then the owner should get it. I have no problem in putting these documents on a website for owners to access. My only concern is we have some small condos, which I don't think have websites. Now, I'm guessing here, my condo, which is a very big condo, does have a website, but if you're a small condo and you don't have a website, suddenly you have to create a website, you have to maintain a website, which adds added costs. And, you know, I think the one thing that condo owners don't want is added costs. We're already being hit with the insurance costs. So, thank you, I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Christine Morrison in support online.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Briefly, I submitted testimony and encourage all to read the February 9, 2024 Senator Hashimoto letter to the DCCA on my behalf, including the 2024 Florida Appeals ruling granting all association records, not partials, as this has been ongoing pursuant to my request under the state statute. Therefore, I support all association records to be made available on the association website with no fees. Lastly, there is no other consumer that has to have legislation for financial transparency. Please support this bill eliminating compliance complaints. It's common sense for equal access to the documents, or create a statewide database. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have in person. If you'd like to, we, oh, let me see. Well, if you'd like to testify, please go ahead.
My name is Richard Emery. I'm the broker for Hawaii First Realty, who I also have been given authority to speak on behalf of Community Associations Institute. As of December 31, 2023, there were 2,183 condominiums in the state of Hawaii. More than 50% are less than 50 units, and those condominiums do not have websites. 20% of the condominiums in Hawaii don't have managing agents or employ a small real estate firm who may manage one small 10 or 15-unit condominium. This is only going to increase costs. The major management companies, which is about 75%, 80% of the industry, already have online all these documents for owners. We agree with Sandy Wong that these are private organizations, they shouldn't be made public with respect to the documents to occupants and/or tenants. So, we oppose this bill as written because it'll put unfair costs on the, on the smaller management companies and services, and on the smaller condo associations that currently don't have a website.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right, in total, we have seven individuals who testified in support, 15 in opposition. Members, questions? Okay, we'll move on. The next measure is SB 801 relating to managing agents. This measure requires managing agents for residential condominium properties over 75 feet in height to have commercial property management experience. First up, Real Estate Commission offering comments.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, Members, getting my name on behalf of the Real Estate Commission. Let's send our written comments and those for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii First Realty in opposition.
Again, Committee, I'm Richard Emery, Principal Broker of Hawaii First Realty. Within the industry of residential condominium management, we already get training through the national trade organizations on the common issues of building maintenance, air conditioning service, parking lot repairs, but residential condominiums have the challenge that we have the reserve law, we have Robert Tools of Order, we have meetings, which is not true to commercial property. They're basically a single owner, and that single owner makes the decisions without having to go through the regulatory issue with respect to that. I can tell you right now today that the 75% of the large condominiums are all going to have commercial property management experience because they're going to manage currently mixed-use buildings like Wailana, where they have their restaurant, their first floor, whatever. I see this as only creating additional costs to the association because currently, the industry provides training on anything a commercial manager may bring to the, to the table. So, I oppose this bill.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Associations Institute. Mr. Walker in opposition online.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. CAI, you know, while we can appreciate that everybody wants their condominium to be run by competent managing agents, I don't think this has the, I don't think this quite accomplishes that just because residential condominiums are so much different. I do have to correct my written testimony a little bit, or clarify it. Yes, it can be a, the managing agent can be a licensed brokerage with employees, and not every employee needs to be a broker. But aside from that, yeah, I think that, just because, excuse me, you know, just emphasize that residential condos are very different from commercial properties, and I think this will hurt the consumer because it will limit the harmful effects of this bill, and there've got to be other ways to ensure that condos are efficiently and accurately run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Philip Nerny in opposition. Thank you. Greg Masakian in support.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'm Greg Masakian. Support this, this bill, but I'm going to ask that it please be amended to strike the section pertaining to the height limitation of the building. Commercial buildings are all different shapes and sizes. Some are wide and shorter, and some are taller, but that's a concern. And in addition, if, what a community manager is, or what a manager is for the building. So, this is very important, and this is a measure that I've introduced, or asked to be introduced this year, which is HB 1312, and that would be for all managers to be licensed. And a manager of the overall association would be the community manager that's under the management company such as Associate Hawaii or Hawaiianana. The site manager, resident manager, or potential general manager are usually facilitate the onsite management of the building. In most cases, they, in many cases, they don't have the strong background. Just to give you an example that, to me, is a little bit shocking, but maybe not to you, our former site manager was a tour bus driver, and our current site manager, from my understanding, her background is in massage therapy. They didn't have, they don't have the background to address a very large commercial building of 183 units. So, I do ask that you please look at that, clarify, and amend the measure if you could.
Thank you very much. That's all the live testimony we have registered by testifiers who indicated they'd like to testify. Anyone else? Okay, we have your testimony. Thank you. Mr. Sedino.
Good morning again. My name is Jeff Sedino, and just brief comments in response to some of the written testimony saying that commercial licenses have very little overlap with association management. Could be true, could not be true, but the point that a managing agent only needs a real estate license also probably does not have a lot of overlap with the management of an association. So, I think that, you know, consistent with the industry reasoning, we do need more applicable education requirements for the site managers and representatives of the managing agents.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? We'll go Vice Chair and then Senator McKelvey.
Okay, a quick question for the representative of the Real Estate Commission.
Hi, Vice Chair.
Thank you. You know, with respect to a lot of the types of issues that the Real Estate Commission has been dealing with, in many respects, you know, the requirement that the managing agents be licensed as Realtors, in the case of many of the problems that we have encountered, particularly over the last five to seven years, really have a lot more to do with building management along the lines of what commercial properties also experience, you know, whether it's maintenance issues, insurance issues, et cetera. Does the Real Estate Commission also work with, I guess, organizations in which managing agents for commercial properties are licensed in a manner that's different from being sort of just licensed as brokers, real estate brokers?
Not by state law. The property management, I mean, it's just simply the real estate broker license, which requires, I believe, out of five years prior to application, three years of experience working with the real estate broker.
Okay. So, would the department be in a position to provide some recommendations if the legislature wanted to change some of the licensure, to expand upon some of the licensing requirements for perhaps larger properties that are subject to a lot more intensive and compelling infrastructure issues than may be the case of the, than those that are the smaller types of residential condominium properties?
Yes, I'm willing to look into the issue and work with stakeholders. We'll just note that anecdotally, the staff receives a lot of phone calls regarding the individuals assigned to the managing agency, association managers, or any other title, and that's a separate issue, and for that, you know, we would request for a sun riser view. But as for the, the current requirements for managing agents and having a real estate broker license, we can definitely take a look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Senator McKelvey.
I don't know who this would be, I guess, Real Estate Commission. But so, this, if this passed, it means that every property manager for every condo would now have to also have commercial building experience over 75 feet, right? So, there are a lot of condominiums in my area, I'm from Maui, by the way, that meet this threshold, and I, we are already having a problem with existing law, sorry, real estate agents. And there is not enough qualified real estate agents even now serve as property managers. You put this new requirement on, on Maui condominiums, there's no way, I can honestly say, that they're going to be able to find property managers who are going to-- they're going to be able to find property managers who are going to meet this criteria. So then what happens if you have a situation like that? What, what are they to do?
Yes, so as currently drafted, it's unclear. There's no experience requirement on property management year wise. And if there was a definition of commercial property management and a number of years of experience to have, if the definition comes out a little bit too stringent, it, yeah, it's possible that it might squeeze out some of the smaller, small business managing agents that may not have that experience and then suddenly some associations might not have a managing agent would have to go and procure for a, one that does meet the requirement.
Yep, and you can't even find one to begin with. That's kind of the line point. Thanks, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. I'd just like to note, we have a hard stop at 11:15 for this hearing. So we're going to take testimony all the way up to 11:15 and on the measures that we haven't fully heard by then, we will defer decision making. So actually, it's my recommendation, I'll just announce, to defer decision making on all measures on this agenda until Friday, February 7th at 9:45 a.m. in this room, Conference Room 229. And the measures that we haven't heard, we will reopen and take testimony on the other measures that we've heard and had the opportunity for members to ask questions on. We will make recommendations and vote out. And so that we can cover, let me see, oh, I'm sorry. It'll be 9:46 a.m. We already have another agenda. 9:46 a.m. on Friday, February 7th at, in room 229 here. So we'll, we'll try and do one more. SB 802 relating to insurance. This measure requires insurers to provide advance written notice to policyholders on a number of different items and requires the insurance commission, commissioner to conduct periodic reviews of insurance rates. First up, we have the Hawaii Insurers Council in opposition.
Yes, we stand on our testimony in opposition.
Thank you for standing on your testimony in opposition. State Farm in opposition.
We stand on your testimony in opposition.
Thank you for standing on your testimony as well. DCCA offering comments.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its testimony.
Thank you very much. Greg Masakian in support.
Yes, I support. I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have supporting testimony from Lynn Matusal and Mary Yi and late testimony in opposition from the American Property Casualty Insurance Association and the National Association of Mutual Insurance Companies. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll move on to SB 804 relating to insurance for Hawaii condominium properties. This measure requires insured, property insurers to offer discounts on a condominium association's annual insurance premium if the association adopts specific risk mitigation upgrades or develops comprehensive disaster response plans. Let me see, DCCA offering comments.
The department stands on its testimony offering comments.
Thank you very much for standing on your testimony. Hawaii Insurers Council in opposition.
Yes, we stand in opposition.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. Greg Masakian in support.
I support this bill and I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony from Lynn Matusal and Mary Yi also in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll go to the last one. SB 1372 relating to condominium association's operating budget. This measure permits condominium associations to borrow from or reallocate their reserve funds, provided the loan is repaid within one year. The Real Estate Commission in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair members. On behalf of the Real Estate Commission, we support this bill. Apologize, I gotta provide a very brief background. Meetings with the governors, joint insurance task force was brought up that the commission does have admin rules that allow borrowing into reserves for operating expenses. Also brought up were concerns that those admin rules were promulgated under HRS Chapter 514A, which was repealed back in 2017. So without statutory authority behind the admin rules, it's unclear whether the rules has guardrails to function as typical admin rules or only function as guidance. So in the event it only functions as guidance, this bill is drafted hopefully as a preemptive effort to clarify and ensure that the associations continue to have this flexibility. Thank you and I apologize.
Thank you very much. Before I go on, I'll just note that I'm inclined to defer this measure. There's a house vehicle moving and I don't know if I like that one either. CAI in opposition.
Richard Emery on behalf of CAI, I wrote an extensive testimony which tells you in essence that the current law already provides for this. It's almost like history. People who've had this problem have already figured out a way to pay for it and finance it because the premium would do in 14 days. I do want to say one thing. If the committee, including the House committee, are inclined to move this forward, simplify it to take away these percent funded issues because they don't meet 95% of the condos, simply say, the Board of Directors has the authority to borrow from the reserve fund for insurance not to exceed 12 months and provided that the money is repaid and provided there's no other loan outstanding from the reserve fund, take away all of the potential disputes or arguments of this percent funded. Just take all that away and make it very simple that the board has the authority to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Nurney in opposition. Thank you for sending testimony. Greg Masakian in opposition.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, Greg Masakian, and I do oppose this measure. It's problematic as written and, and in general, it's problematic that boards tend to already do this. In my association, they did this recently. So moving funds without owner approval, there should be always some kind of a vote for unusual circumstances like the insurance requirements, you know, where you've got an additional bill coming in that wasn't budgeted for. So while I appreciate the desire to be able to tap into funds when needed, it needs to be carefully crafted. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, in total, we had one testifier in support, 12 in opposition and one with comments. If there are no questions, then we will defer the decision making on this agenda again to Friday, February 7th, 2025 at 9:46 a.m. in room 225. And we are adjourned.